All right, it's time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting which has been duly posted at the Harlem City Commission to order and call upon Commissioner Frank Quintet to lead us in an indication.
Can you all rise and bow your heads, please? Let us express our gratitude for the opportunity to serve Harlingen, its mission and our constituency, for the gifts that we had that enable us to make a difference in the lives of our citizens, for the chance to do something very special and meaningful with our leadership. Let us ask our heavenly Father to help us to embrace the challenge and responsibility we have as leaders, to guide us to lead with integrity, common sense, give us the wisdom to make intelligent decisions, the courage to make tough decisions, and the character to make the right decisions. And finally, help us to always be welcoming, loving, inclusive, and open the way our Lord Jesus Christ has always been with us. In your sweet name, Lord Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Fledges Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. Thank you for being here. This time we'll ask for citizen communication and input.
Mayor, we have Kayla and Henry McHarman on food allergies.
Okay. Sign up. Come on up, please. Thanks. Tell us your name and where you live, your address, and then go ahead and tell us what you want to say.
Hello, my name is Henry and 701 Washington Circle from Harlingen.
Thank you.
I want to make a change where kids can be welcome because I know some parents out there are very sad because they want their son to enjoy the food at the restaurant. So I want to make restaurants peanut-free. Bye.
We're here today because we often travel. Henry suffers from severe food allergies since he was three, and we often travel all around Texas out of state. And Henry recently took notice that other cities and states, their restaurants are very welcoming to those with food allergies, and he took it upon himself to ask me, "Mom, why can't our city be like this?" So I said, "I don't know, but let's go ahead and find out what we can do to collaborate and perhaps," I don't know, "work with the city just to kind of get restaurants more involved and aware that 6% of Harlingen's kids suffer from severe food allergies." Kids like Henry are very limited to eating in the town. We only eat at about three restaurants. When we do try to explore their restaurants in the city here, they're pretty much unaware of what food allergies are, or they're not able to verify what is truly in their food. So Henry's just wanting to perhaps maybe have some more signs up and work with local restaurants on food allergies. So we thought we'd start here.
Okay, well, thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
We can't really discuss this because it's on, but if you want to give your name and address to Gabriel Gonzalez, maybe we can follow up.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next person?
That's it, Lou.
All right, thank you. So item one is a proclamation proclaiming September 27, 2019 as Pepys Restaurant 25th Anniversary Day. So we'd like to ask Joey Yala to come forward. We can present this proclamation to you. So we can look down over here. The year one might even take our picture at some point. This is great. I'm so pleased to be able to present this proclamation tonight. Whereas the year 2019 marks the 25th anniversary of Pepys Restaurant located at 117 South 77 Sunshine Street, Harlem, Texas. And whereas Joey Yala, owner of Pepys Restaurant, Texas Softball Hall of Famer, born in Brownsville, moved to Harlingen as soon as he could, retired and has graduated Brownsville High School. And whereas in 1984, he moved to Harlingen and managed the restaurant for 10 years before opening Pepys Restaurant in 1994. Whereas Mr. Yala is very familiar with the word teamwork and strives to continue the spirit of teamwork by bringing excellent staff to his restaurant. And whereas Mr. Yala's dedication to consistently high-quality service is mirrored through the work of his staff by providing excellent customer services. Whereas good quality of the food, friendly service of the kitchen waitstaff, and the commitment to the restaurant business is the key to success. And whereas in 1996, Pepys Restaurant was selected as one of the top 50 Mexican restaurants in the nation by Hispanic Magazine, appeared in the Texas Monthly Magazine, and has drawn celebrities such as Caroline Kennedy and John Quinones. And whereas Mr. Yala loves to help the community by sponsoring posters of youth that play football, basketball, and other sports many more than sports. They come from San Benito, Los Rosos, from Seves, Weston, Lightburg, and Wrightonville and all throughout. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of Harlem and the City Commission, I, Eric Chris Poswell, hereby commemorate the 27th September 27, 2019, as Pepys Restaurant 25th Anniversary Day and call upon all citizens to recognize Mr. Joey Yala for many years of service in the restaurant business. Joe, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, we're going to pass on item two tonight because of the length of the agenda and put that presentation on the next meeting. Item agenda. Item three, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 4 and the special meeting of September 17, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, items four, A through H. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Any other? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five is the presentation of the City of Harlem's efforts to pursue the 2020 All American City Award. Joel.
Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager. Just a quick presentation on our efforts to pursue the All American City Award. And so it is known in the community, in the state, in the nation, that the All American City Award is kind of like the prestige award to a city, a local government that does partnerships, collaborates in the community, provides their citizens a better opportunity to enhance either the life, their well-being, et cetera. And so this year, the theme is enhancing health and well-being through civic engagement. And so over the years, especially in the last two, three years, the city has really done a lot in this topic. And so we look at the social bike rides that we do, the Heroes Run, the Mayor's Walk, the school district, they do their own with partnership with us, nutrition classes, yogas, pickleball, et cetera. And so we feel that this year, in this process, we have a good chance, we feel we have a good chance with the help of obviously the community, the school district, UTRGV, Healthy Harlingen, and so forth. And so next week on Friday is the letter of intent is due, and so we're currently working on that process now. We have to have it finalized this week. We'll have it to City Manager by Monday or Tuesday of next week before we actually submit. The full application is due in February, and so that gives us about two, three months to kind of come back and look at what three projects the city has done related to this topic. Hopefully, in March of 2020, a finalist is selected. Out of the entire US, only 20 cities get selected. And so once you get selected, you have two months to prepare a presentation, a skit and dance, and sing along. And so this is where we hope to bring in the school district to help us out. And obviously, we hope that some of you or many of you will be dancing and...
You don't want me to do the fight kick again? I was just ahead of the chief. I don't think you saw the photo.
Mr. Besmar is perfectly capable.
He can hum.
Entertaining.
I just need to stretch.
And so I do have a quick, it is a three-minute video, but I just wanted the first 30 seconds so you're aware of the process and actually the competition, which would be in Denver, Colorado, June of 2020.
Congratulations to All American City of Carson, California. Ladies and gentlemen, All American City of Summerfield, Missouri.
All American City, stop the...
Every year, the National Civic League recognizes 10 communities across the country with the All America City Award. This award recognizes the community's ability to bring residents, organizations, and governments together to solve the challenges in their communities. Communities of all sizes from every part of the country have entered in one, including Lakewood in 2011.
You know, there's so much that goes into winning the All America City Award or even being invited to the final competition. You learn so much about your community, you learn so much about perhaps businesses or neighborhood organizations you didn't know that much about before. And then when you finally get to the competition, you learn so much from each and every other city that is there, and you bond with these folks, and you take back great ideas.
Every year, the award focuses on a specific issue or topic. Each community describes three different projects, at least one of which is focused on that year's topic. AAC has focused on critical issues such as support for veterans, supporting vulnerable boys and young men, and creating healthy community. This work around helping young people is not just moral and charity, as important as that is, it's also an economic one. If the United States of America is unaffected, we complete the rest of the world. We eat young people across this country.
And so I'll stop it there, but just to give you a glimpse of what we're looking at, the last time the city had something or had the actual award was 1992. And so it's been 27 years, and so we do so much in the community. And so I feel that this is a great project. It is a lot of effort, but I know we can do something by February.
All right, anybody have any questions? I'm really very happy that we're going to try to get this recertification of our All American City Award. So I congratulate the staff for wanting to take this on. It's not like you don't have anything else to do, but I think this is something we need to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to participating and making this happen for us. Okay, item six is consideration and possible action to authorize the mayor to execute the government lease number 697 DCM-19-L-00206 Airport Surveillance Radar ASR signed and easements between the Federal Aviation Administration and the City of Harlem granting FAA use of land rights at no cost for a 15-year term. Marv?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, we received a request from the Federal Aviation Administration to renew the lease. The lease was for a period of 15 years, like you said, at a no cost. I'd like to also add that with that radar system comes six high-paying air traffic control positions here locally in Harlingen, as well as 11 technicians that come along with that site. Those sites can be actually positioned anywhere and remoted. We're lucky to have it here locally near our airport and having those jobs associated with that. So with that, I can entertain any questions that you may have.
All right, is there a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the lease?
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Marv. So at this time, I'm going to have to leave the meeting a little early, and I'm going to pass the gavel to Mayor Pro Tem Besmar, and here he is.
Okay, so we shall move on to item number seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on the first reading of a specific use permit, SUP, to allow storage building greater than 144 square feet in a single-family residential R1, District for Lot 11, Block 153, Harlingen Original Town Site subdivision located at 218 West Lincoln Avenue, applicant Magdalena and Jesús Peralta.
Mayor Pro Tem and City Commissioners, a good evening. We have a specific use permit to allow a storage building that is greater than 144 square feet at 218 West Lincoln Avenue. The construction of a two-story storage building commenced in January of this year. It was done without a building permit. Halfway through the construction code, through the construction code compliance officers noticed the building and placed a stop work order on February 26, 2019. On August 22 of this year, after a public hearing, the zoning board of adjustments and appeals granted a variance for an encroachment to the side yard setback. The proposed storage room will have a total of 701.3 square foot, and it's a two-story building. The zoning is a single-family residential all around, West Lincoln Avenue, between A and B Streets. That's the aerial photograph, it's houses all around. And the picture on the right shows the storage room that is halfway in the construction. And that's the side plan and the floor plan for the storage room. Picture from the alleyway.
Oh, geez.
We did receive some phone calls in support. We also received a letter in opposition, and that's why this case is coming before you today. So the letter is there, and it's also in your packet. Staff recommends approval of the SUP, subject to the storage building being used primarily for storage of domestic goods, not to be hazardous chemicals or dangerous materials. The building cannot be used for living space and must comply with all the requirements by planning and zoning, building, engineering, and fire prevention. During the meeting of October 9, one surrounding property owner and the applicant spoke in support of the project. After a brief discussion, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Do the Commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, can you go back to the picture of the actual building? Okay, so do you know what, well, does it have like a bathroom and nothing like that? But it has electrical?
No, no electric.
So it's just a shell?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a pretty tall, tall building.
Yeah.
Okay, so they had a stop work order in February of last year or this past year? And they haven't done construction since?
No.
Okay.
Because they did not have a permit, at this point, we've had no inspections of it to make sure it meets...
No, they will have, if you approve the SUP today and after it's approved for the second, for the second reading, then they could apply for the building permit, but they will have to get an engineer to do inspections.
And then the second question is, I noticed, I believe, the photo after this one. There, there's a door.
Yes.
Second floor, is there going to be putting a patio in or some sort of a...
We tried to contact the owner because the plan showed the stairway being inside, so we were wondering about that door, but we were not able to get a hold of her. So maybe she can explain what the purpose of that door is.
Are they not here? They're not here?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
If you could come up and address the issue of the door, please. The exterior door.
Good evening, City, Acting City Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. Serna. For the record, my name is Juan Santana. I am the property owner adjacent to this structure that you're looking at here.
And do you have permission to speak on behalf of the property owner?
I do, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, she will be speaking also, but she asked me to try to communicate with you all.
Oh, I understand.
Her, their intentions is to close off that door since they do have the stairwells inside for their storage. The, the living structure that they have, Commissioners, is a two-story home. It's not a lot of living area and storage area in the home, so they made a storage large, as you can see, storage area, totally storage, okay? I live next to them in the adjacent lot. Going through the other commissions that we attended, I did not have any opposition to the structure and the location of the structure, me being right next to it. The applicant is advising me or telling me that they are going to close that door that you see there, since they do have the stairs inside. And answer to the question that was brought up, no, no water or sewer in the storage, but they, they would like, if approved, like to apply for electrical power to light up the storage area.
Sir, I have a question. Do they have a contractor or are they doing it by themselves? Or, because that's a pretty intricate building, I mean, it's not a simple building to build, right?
To best of my knowledge...
Do they have a contractor? Did the contractor not want to pay the permit for when they started construction? Or how did it get to that point?
To that point.
Without a permit?
To best of my knowledge, no, they do not have a contracted construction contractor. The applicant himself works in construction, general construction like you and I would. So he and some friends of him has put it up. So no, not a contract with a licensed contractor.
Does this have a foundation or is it just sitting on top of...
It's a concrete foundation, correct.
So in the concrete foundation, there's no plumbing, there's no drainage, it's just a slab?
To best of my knowledge, no. No, not that I know of. I've, I've not seen the interior of it, okay? But no, to best of my knowledge, there is none.
So when they inspect it, they would do that, right?
That was going to be my next question if you didn't ask it. When we do the inspection, we're going to be checking for any plumbing that's underneath the foundation, that the foundation was poured correctly, proper support for two stories?
Yeah, because the building does not have any, if they have gotten a plumber, the plumber will have come in for a permit because plumbers are supposed to get a permit.
But it's obvious, it's obvious this gentleman is very skilled.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not...
It's my best friend.
I'm trying to find a plumber to come in and get a permit.
They are going to have to get an engineer and do an inspection of the, of the foundation.
Okay. But that is the question. We would check for all those things.
Yes.
And just in case there is drainage, then they would have to reapply for a different, different kind of permit, correct? Because the permit that we're attempting to approve is just for a storage facility at this point so they can go forward, right?
Right.
In the process?
It's just a big shed, period.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Right. In fact, we just had one of these recently. It wasn't two-story, similar situation.
Well, we had it, was it last year that they built a whole other house in the back?
It was last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. That was my question. I'm done asking questions.
Okay, Commissioners, have any other questions? Then this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this zoning issue?
Yes.
Hearing nobody offering to speak in this public hearing for or against the zoning issue, we will move to do the vote. Item number B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading for a specific use permit to allow storage building greater than 144 square feet in a single-family residence R1 district at the above-described property.
Right there.
Is that you now? It said ordinance.
Ordinance.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Magdalena and Jesús Peralta to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a single-family residential R1 district for Lot 11, Block 153, Harlingen Original Town Site subdivision located at 218 West Lincoln Avenue, subject to, one, storage building being used primarily for the use or storage of goods and/or provisions, not including hazardous chemicals or dangerous materials; two, the building cannot be used as living space; and three, complying with the requirements administered by planning and zoning, building inspections, and fire prevention.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mayor Pro Tem, just to clarify, they have to go through the added expense of hiring an engineer to inspect the structure for building inspections, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Just to be clear.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. All in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Item number eight, also planning and zoning, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit, SUP, to allow an expansion of an existing childcare business by the name of Martha's Playground to adjacent property located within a light industry district for Lot 1, Block 1, Safeguard subdivision, and 1.58 acres out at east, 10 acres of Block 4 highway subdivision located at 5206-5402 South Expressway 83. Applicant Roger Gonzalez, you're on.
Yes, this is an existing daycare, and they, they're doing very well, and they would like to expand the operations. The zoning is industrial, there's a, it's along the expressway. You have commercial zoning to the south and across the expressway, and then you have a mobile home park to the north. And that's the aerial photograph. You have the Harlingen Medical Center across the expressway and then the mobile home park. And there's an existing building here that finished, but they closed many years ago. They're trying to take over the, this is the existing playground. They want to take over this building, build a parking lot here, and so double the size of the operations for the daycare. That does zoom of the, of the site or the aerial photograph. And this is, this was provided by the applicant, kind of explaining what they're trying to do. The business has been in the city since 2005. They have 20 jobs. They want, they have, they will be able to accommodate 120 more kids with this expansion if approved. And then the floor plan and the side plan for the area that they want to expand to. And the recommendation is, staff recommends approval, subject to providing and maintaining the circular drive and required parking as per the quarter bonuses, also obtaining and maintaining the proper state and city permits, and complying with the requirements by planning and zoning, building inspections, environmental health, and fire prevention departments. And Planning and Zoning Commission met on October 9. There was no opposition, and after a brief discussion, the board approved it unanimously.
Do the Commissioners have any questions?
I do. I know the location. When you say the circular drive, is that, there's something specific about the circular drive?
No.
It says maintaining the circular drive, and I'm like, is there something, is it requirement?
Yeah, I mean, they just, they cannot go away with it. They have to...
Is that for the loading and unloading?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. There's a specific reason to have a circular, I just, as I read the packet, I found it kind of odd.
It's for safety, so that you're not backing out and, you know, there's kids, you know, walking around.
Nope, that was my only question.
Okay, this is a public hearing on item number eight. Would anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this zoning change? Hearing none, we will move on to item B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading of a specific use permit to allow expansion of an existing childcare business by the name of Martha's Playground at the above-described property.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Roger Gonzalez to allow expansion of an existing childcare business by the name of Martha's Playground to adjacent property located within a light industry district for Lot 1, Block 1, Safeguard subdivision, and 1.58 acres out of the east, 10 acres of Block 4, highway subdivision located at 5206 to 5402 South Expressway 83, subject to, first, providing and maintaining the required parking and circular drive, and two, obtaining and maintaining proper state permits, and three, complying with requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, environmental health, and fire prevention departments, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
May I hear a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, planning and zoning, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in the general retail district Lot 4, Block 1, Saw Point subdivision located at 640 North Ed Carey Drive. Applicant Kamlish Bakhta. Applicant Kamlish Bhakta.
Yes, this is a, an SUP for a bar. This peeling has been a bar since the year 2005, and it was named the Hot Shots for many years. There, there is a recent change of ownership, uh, and that's why this is, is coming before you, because a new, new owner for the bar. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. You have the aerial photograph, it's on Ed Carey Drive, across the street from the Whataburger and the Sonic, in a commercial plaza right here.
Is it open now?
No.
Okay.
You already have the sign, the sign is already up. Staff recommends approval, uh, subject to having security officers during peak hours at Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, video surveillance with a thirty-day retention period, lighting inside and outside the business at all times, obtain and maintain the proper TABC state permits, comply with the city's smoking ordinance, and all the requirements from the different departments. Planning and zoning commission met on October 9th, there was no opposition, and they recommended approval unanimously.
Do the commissioners have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this, uh, proposal? Hearing none, close of public hearing, uh, we're going to do consideration and, uh, possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading for a SUP, specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in the general retail district at the above described property.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Kamlish Bhakta to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district for lot 4, block 1, South Point subdivision located at 640 North Ed Carey Drive, subject to, one, provision of security officers during peak hours of operation Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM; two, provision of video surveillance within thirty, with thirty-day retention period; three, provision of adequate lighting inside and outside the business; four, obtain and maintain proper state permits; five, compliance code of ordinance chapter 22, article 3, sections 2254 to 2266, smoking regulations; and six, compliance with the requirements administered by the planning and zoning commission, building inspections departments, environmental health, fire prevention, and police departments prior to the issuance of certificate, certificate of occupancy.
Uh, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, okay, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Item number 10, planning and zoning, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential, single-family R1 district to residential multifamily M2 district for 8.99 acres of land consisting of 0.50 acres out of block 41 and 8.49 acres out of block 42, Howard Dixieland Heights subdivision, applicant Christopher S. Dowling, care of Marine Military Academy.
Yes, uh, this is the location of the property, uh, here's Dixon Land Road and Garrett, Garrett Road. The zoning is a single-family residential at this time, the zoning to, to the east is multifamily residential, and then to the north is a single-family with an existing subdivision, and then to the west is a zone single-family, but it's agricultural land. A corporation is interested in purchasing the property to develop a multifamily development, similar to the Harlingen Hacienda Casitas development, which is located at the southeast corner, southeast corner of Business A3 and Paloma Lane. And then you have the aerial photograph, uh, there is a, a house here, and then the rest is agricultural, agricultural, and then you have Hebrew Ford Place subdivision across the street, and then other subdivisions over here, and there is an apartment complex further over here. And that's the survey of the property, it measures 593 by 660. And that's the picture from the corner of Dixieland and Garrett. And in the land use plan, in the land use plan, it calls for single-family, for low-density residential, for that whole area. For the recommendation, although the rezoning request is not consistent with the future land use plan designation for the subject property, the request is consistent with the adjacent multifamily residential zoning to the east, and therefore staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. During their meeting of, of October 9th, one surrounding property owner spoken with concerns about her property values decreasing as a result of the multifamily development, she had concerns about the type of housing going there, and the layout, uh, the entrances and exits for the complex. After some discussion, and after the board members explained to the surrounding property owner that this is the first step of many steps before the apartments are constructed at the site, the commission recommended approval of the rezoning, uh, request unanimously.
Any questions from the commission?
Did they address her concerns?
Yeah, well, some of the concerns cannot be addressed, because we don't, we don't know what the development will look like, you know, we don't, we still don't know where the entrances and exits will be.
So, so the property owner that's surround, that was, is still in opposition of it, right?
Yeah, as far as I know, yes.
I'm not sure who the person that showed up, but I know that there's at least one family that's in opposition to it, uh, that's the only one that expressed any, other than the person that showed up, but it-
Well, but, but if you look at it, that's probably, those are big tracts of land, so-
Those are big tracts of land.
I imagine the, the one that's upset about it is the one that's right next to it.
Actually, no, it's somebody on, on, on the, that's within the 200-
Oh, in the US homes?
US homes.
I did receive phone calls also on Arcadia Street, they are very concerned, and they're opposing the development of this project.
The, the only problem we have, and I tried to explain to them, is that this is just a rezoning, it's got nothing, winners, because that, that they'd like to buy it, just because they say they're gonna do something with it, doesn't mean they have to, they're not bound, from what I understand, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, uh, this is just a zoning.
Well, but, but if we're changing the, the-
I understand.
You're opening the door, so they can-
Yes, once you change the zoning, then it's-
That's a problem.
It's essentially, someone can do multifamily.
But they can do something different besides, or is, if they decide that it's not economically feasible for them to do the, the current, something like hacienda, they can sell that to somebody else, now it's M2, anything can happen.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not comfortable with changing that zoning.
One of the problems is, uh, I live in front, in front of Los Inos, and I can already predict what problems they're gonna have, and the concerns of those citizens that are calling on Arcadia Street, I can already see what they're talking about, because I face them every day, we're living in front of Los Inos.
And those homes have been there, I grew up in that neighborhood.
Yes.
So.
So they are concerned regarding this project, and they're opposing the project.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I would make the motion that-
Public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing, uh, would anyone like to speak for or against this zoning proposed change? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and leave two minutes.
My name is Herman Montemayor, I live right next to 2501 Garrett Road, that, when you put up the picture, my house is the big, big house, right on Dixieland, uh, very comfortable, and our neighbors are very comfortable. Uh, when I just saw that hacienda, that's the one behind Wild Bills, right, that apartment complex that they have back there, low, is it, is it a, a low-income, uh, like section eight? No? Well, I'm just, I'm saying, uh, it's a nice area, where we're living in that area, and I would like to keep it like that, you know, if they do something like that, or, yeah, I'm just, I'm worried, I'm very worried about it, and I'm speaking of as, as an owner. I paid a lot of taxes, there, over $7,000 a year on my property alone, so, you know, I think I can speak up on that, and I appreciate you guys listening to me.
Okay, thank you for speaking. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this proposal? Ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up, state your name and your address.
Can we add these out to city question?
A police officer will help you.
Oh, thank you, so there's six on the right, so this is home address.
Okay, and your name and address, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Chloe Dotson, I'm the director of real estate development for the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, sorry, it's actually CDCB, we went through a rebranding. Um, my address, our address is 901 East Levy Street in Brownsville, Texas. Um, first of all, I'd like to say good afternoon to the city, um, commission and, and mayor. Um, my name is Chloe Dotson, like I said before, I'm the director of real estate development with CDCB. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to stand before you today, our executive director, Nick Mitchell, apologizes for his absence, he's currently out of the state traveling for work, but I would like to thank CDCB board members for being here, Ms. Cheryl Leverge and Ms., uh, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you so much for being here and showing your support. Um, I would like to give you a little bit of background about CDCB, C, thank you so much, CDCB is a private 501(c)(3) community housing development organization, it's called a cho-to. Uh, we were founded in 1974, and we've been providing safe, sanitary, affordable housing to citizens in Lower Rio Grande Valley, Texas, and we're now one of the largest nonprofit producers of single-family housing for both renters and homeowners. We would like to continue to provide quality housing in the city of Harlingen, as we have before. On October 9th, 2019, the city of Harlingen planning and zoning staff and board supported and approved initial rezoning of 8.99 acres for the property located at the intersection of Dixieland and Garrett Road. We are here in support of the planning and zoning staff and board recommendation for the approval of rezoning for the property. First, I would like to rate, I would like to lay to rest many of the negative rumors about the request for zoning of this particular site. Since this request is still an initial rezoning, um, and this is not a request for construction permits, our team has not spent any funds on site design, uh, we refer you to La Hacienda or Los Somos, or the fifty units we're building in Santa Rosa at this point. However, we have completed two other multifamily projects, and we're building fifty units in Santa Rosa, and we were actually just awarded Casitas Lantana, which is a $13 million project we'll be building in the city of Brownsville soon. I repeat, this is not a section A community, this is not a public housing community, this will not reduce surrounding neighborhood property values. CDCB, thus this provoke, proposed community abides by all fair housing regulations, which prohibits housing discrimination based on the, on the color of someone's skin, based on sex, religion, income sources, et cetera. So this community will be open to all residents earning under 60% AMI. Right now, a family of four in the city of Harlingen, at 60% AMI is $34,000. Right now, a family of four making 100% AMI, that is, the general median, um, household income, is $44,000. The people that we are serving, their income is just less by $8,000.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Your, your time is up.
Yes, um, we hope that this information has cleared up some of the rumors and, and some of the smoke in the air, and, uh, if you have any additional questions, we're here to answer those.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for or against this zoning change? Ms. Cheryl, if you could identify yourself and your address, please.
Sure, um, I'm Cheryl Leverge, 61 Los Amigos, Harlingen, um, it's, uh, great to be here and see all of you and, and, uh, support this great organization, um, I've been proud to serve on the board for the last three years, there is amazing work going on, and we are all very proud to have the development already here in Harlingen that has won national awards for design, um, it is a very innovative project, it is not section eight, this is not section eight, and I would remind all of you that this is a rezoning request, you have, uh, other multifamily properties right next to this, this is not spot rezoning, um, so it's possible, uh, development like this, or others, could go in on those properties as well. So, um, this is simply a rezoning request, we have a design shareet that will get started and be going on in the next few months, um, taking into consideration all of the concerns that we hear, because that's how we work, um, so we would encourage you to be supportive of this project, I think it's something to be very proud of, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the zoning? Yes, ma'am, your name and address?
Hi, my name is Nidia Tapia Gonzalez, 5617 Walper Simmons, I'm also on the board of directors of the, the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, and I feel so proud for what they do, and how much thought they put into it, because I'm in those meetings with those presentations, when everybody asking us on behalf, on behalf of the people of, of Harlingen, and we wanna do the best for it, and I can guarantee you, this project will certainly make you proud, and, uh, you will really, especially the neighbors, you will really, really, um, enjoy what you're gonna see in the ways of design and the professionalism that will come with it, thank you.
Javier, I, I have a question, what does MMA have to do with this?
They own the property.
Are they owners of the property?
They own the property.
Yeah.
In, in order for this to go through, MMA has to have the M2 designation to make the sale, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at our city manager and ask him a question, because it's important.
Okay, go ahead.
And I don't know if you're the right, or our attorney is right.
A four-fifth, a four-fifth vote.
And we've run across this before, and I've brought this up.
Is that correct, Allison?
It takes four out of five of us, or a four-fifth vote?
No, it's a simple, simple majority for zoning.
Not to overturn.
Even though, if, if to overturn the P and Z?
That's, that's for the subdivision ordinance, this is a zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So a simple majority to approve or disapprove.
Okay.
Okay.
So, just to comment-
Yes, I was gonna, I know you raised your hand.
All we're doing is just a rezoning, we're not doing anything, we're not building anything on it yet, if something comes up later on in the future, you have every right to oppose that at that point again, so that doesn't mean this is a done deal, it's just a rezoning issue, correct?
Unfortunately, that's what I understand, too, because I asked-
And if MMA is okay with this sale, then-
So, what, what, once it's multifamily-
But I'm worried, I'm worried about the people that, that are opposed to it, that live right next door and across the street.
Javier, Javier, once it's multifamily, someone wants to build a multifamily development on there, they could do it.
Yes.
And currently, they can do it on the three pieces of property adjacent to this property.
So let them go next door.
But they're not selling it, MMA is.
Okay, uh, if we could, uh, have our attorney read, as it's an ordinance?
An ordinance amending-
You gotta close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing, no, wait. Okay, reopen the public hearing, yes, sir, your name, your, uh, street address?
I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
My name is, uh, Mark Mosley, I work for the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, I was here when we built La Hacienda.
Okay, and where do you live?
I'm just, I'm sorry, uh, my office is 901 East Levy in Brownsville. Um, we were asked in by the city and the Cameron County Housing Authority after a dollar, I'm not sure, some of you probably remember, I remember you from the groundbreaking, um, because those units, although they were in poor condition to start, um, 70% had been demolished, they were boarded up, and the city had condemned them, and the housing authority was in trouble with HUD. We came in, asked the people, the residents around, that includes the, the two, the two neighborhoods, or in that case, their mobile homes, um, what they wanted, what the residents who lived there then, which was only about five that were still habitable, what they wanted, and we came up with the single-family design, you know, they aren't like a three-story walk-up apartments, we try to run communities, and you can see by the, the other ones that we've built, and the ones that we're currently building, all follow that same design, where people, more or less, can take ownership of the community, they have barbecue grills, just like anybody, any homeowner, they take pride in their houses, they take their trash out, it doesn't go to a big dumpster, anything like that, and we build neighborhoods, both when we do single-family for ownership and, and multifamily, that are divided in single-family designs, we have never built like a three-story walk-up, we don't do these high-density developments, we are very intentional of what we build. Um, the, what, the owner of Wild Bills, when we were there, took the opportunity, because we increased his property values, to be able to sell that, which is no longer Wild Bills, it's, it's a, uh, event center, and if you look there, we brought in, brought a tax base, um, I don't know, it's a, it, that was a $12 million project, I'm assuming this one would be close to the same size, um, which is 56 units, it's a pretty big tax base- It's a pretty big tax base we bring to our community.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Allison, you read the ordinance? Public hearing is closed.
There was nobody else who wanted to speak?
No.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential, single-family R1 District to residential, multifamily M2 District for 8.99 acres of land, consisting of .5 acres out of Block 41 and 8.49 acres out of Block 42, Howard Dixieland Heights Subdivision, located at the southeast corner of Dixieland Road and Garrett Road, providing for publication and ordaining other matters relating to the foregoing.
And Item B is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading to rezone from residential, single-family R1 District to residential, multifamily M2 District for the above-described party. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. All in favor, signify by voting aye.
Aye.
How many ayes? Let's, how many hands was that?
Two.
Two hands?
Yes.
Those opposed?
Two.
Two. It's a tie. I'm going to vote against this to break the tie. Motion fails. Item number 11, planning and zoning.
We have another request for zoning for multifamily. This one is Lot 3, Sun Valley Shopping Center, Unit Number 2, save and accept 30 feet by 58 feet, located on the west side of 11th Street, north of Washington Avenue. The, so, the, the property is, here's 9th Street, I mean 11th Street. This is 9th Street, and then you have Washington and Patneff. So it's kind of a vacant property that stayed in the middle of that, those neighborhoods. The zoning is a single-family residential. You have commercial zoning to the east, and then you have multifamily zoning to the south, and then single-family zoning to the north. You have the, an aerial photograph, Sun Valley Plaza is to the east. To the south, you have the multifamily zoning, but you have a mix of houses and apartments. Mostly houses, but you do have a few apartment complexes mixed in in the neighborhood. And you have a two-story apartment building here, and a two-story apartment building here. The rest are all single-family houses all around. And that's the subject property, 100 feet by almost 700 feet. Again, another buyer is interested in purchasing the property to develop a multifamily development at the site. Pictures on the right is from 11th Street, and on the left is from 9th Street. On 9th Street, you have a city lift station close to the street. And the land use plan is, it calls for low, low-density residential all around. On recommendation, even though the zoning is, the request is not consistent with the land use plan designation for the subject property, their request is consistent with the adjacent multifamily residential zoning to the west and south. And therefore, planning staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. This was pretty controversial at the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was considerable opposition to the rezoning request from, from the surrounding property owners along Patneff Avenue especially. The owners expressed a concern about the impact the multifamily development will have on the neighborhood drainage system, since the area tends to flood during heavy rainfalls. Additional concerns mentioned during the public hearing were the negative impact of the sewer system and a potential increase in foul odor from the nearby lift station. Other concerns mentioned were possible negative impacts to the property values of, to the nearby homes and a possible rise in the crime rate in the, in the neighborhood. After some discussion and after the board members explained to the surrounding property owners that this is the first step of many steps, the commission approved, recommended approval unanimously.
And I should have said, this was a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential, single-family R1 District to residential, multifamily M2 District to Lot 3, Sun Valley Shopping Center, Unit Number 2, save and accept 30 feet by 58.33 feet, located on the west side of 11th Street, north of Washington Avenue, applicant John Timms. Did the commissioners have any questions?
What's the physical size of the lot?
It's 100 feet by almost 700.
100 by 700?
Almost 698. And over here, there's a piece cut off for the lift station.
Well, that's the except part. Got it.
Sir, what I don't understand is that, you know, here's another situation, and obviously, there was a bunch of opposition. How is it that they're not listening to the people that are opposing?
My understanding, unless somebody can tell me different, is we're not supposed to consider what they're going to do with the property.
Yeah, they're not.
Is it consistent? This is a zoning issue, not a permit to, to develop the property. And that's, that's, I mean, I'm trying to be consistent in what it's supposed to be.
We're supposed to consider the issue at hand and nothing else.
Right. And unfortunately, again, what you're, this one here?
So, so when the argument is, oh, but it's not consistent with our land use, so we're going to deny it. I mean, how do you justify that?
Right.
It goes the same way.
Right.
So.
You're creating a dilemma that doesn't exist. So my, I have a question.
That's not true. I mean, I've had this situation.
I have a question. Can you go back to the slide where it said, where there was opposition? The, the summary? There's something, right there. Additional concerns during the public hearing about foul odor? Where did I see that?
They have a lift station.
It's there, there's a lift station.
Okay. Is that an opinion, or is that, where's our, is that an opinion, or is that a fact? I want, I want to hear from our water district, I mean, our Water Works.
Tim was here. Is Tim still here?
He did? Okay. So, I, obviously, that's my district. I go by there a lot, and I'm not sure if that's true, or?
Well, you don't, you don't live there.
Well, I live in the area, so I know what I'm talking about. I'm trying to find out whether that's an opinion or if that's a fact, because this is, these are, this is just a hearing, correct? I mean, public input.
I can address that one, because I live on the corner right there next to the station.
And there is?
Sir, 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 sir. I, I know, we'll give you an opportunity, and we're not to entertain dialogue with the?
My question is, is that a fact? And I want, I'd like to find that out from, I know there's an opinion, but I'd like to find out. If there is a foul odor, then obviously, we have to do something about it, because this shouldn't be happening. But, you know, I get foul, there's, in my own restroom, there's foul smells. And it doesn't mean it happens all the time. There's, we got to figure out what's going on over in the area.
You know, we can always table this, and we can ask Tim to present. The only concern I had on this property, I'll tell you what concern I had on the property, was the drainage. But I know that when the developer comes in, he has to come up with a, a plan that says he has a solution to drain it.
To keep it from flooding?
To keep it from flooding.
Correct. Okay, well, then, I, I agree with Commissioner Yal. Can we go ahead and table it now at this?
First, we must have a public hearing.
Oh, we haven't, okay.
Yes. Okay, are there any other questions to Mr. Javier? Okay, a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing to speak for or against this. Sir, did you want to speak? And tell us your name and your physical address, please?
Okay, well, my name is Gabriel Isel Trevino, and I actually live right on the corner of 9th and Patneff, next to the lift station. And we'll get into the opinion or fact matter later at another hearing. I can tell you right now that when it does rain, that corner does flood. There is insufficient drainage. My son is actually a water resources engineer, and he has told me that there is something wrong with this area. That's what he does for a living. I can also tell you that gray water comes up out of the manhole that's right there. They've had to move the manhole behind my house because it collapsed. So that tells me there's definitely something wrong with the drainage system. I have actually called for the station 19 several times, almost at every rainfall. And those should be cataloged with the Water District. Now, the concern here is, and I know you're supposed to be thinking about just zoning or whatever, but the developer himself said at the meeting that he wanted to put a 20-unit apartment complex there. So, and I know this is the first stage, but once you open a door and the foot is in, it's very hard to close that door. All right? My concern is the drainage. Okay, there is flooding. We have a new neighbor that just moved in across the, across the street from us, and I believe he's here, but he had about eight inches of water in his home that he just bought a few months ago. So, the landowner, or the person wanting to develop it, also said that this is going to be an income of $18,000 or more now. When my wife and I first got married, that's about where we were. And I consider ourselves good people, so this is not anything towards low-income families, but all it takes is one for there to be an issue. I've been there since 2002, and I can probably tell you that we've had two police calls since then to our neighborhood. Okay? The apartment complexes that were put in over there, since we weren't within 200 feet, we weren't notified. Which, by the way, that's an issue, because none of my neighbors across the street even received the notice for the zoning, because they were right on that dotted line. So we made sure to give it to them as well. But those are my opposition.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to speak for or against this? Come to the podium, sir. State your name and your physical address.
My name is Jose Alvarado. I live near the corner to him.
And what's your address, please?
821 Patneff Avenue.
Thank you.
I've been there 25 years, and we have flooding. We have a problem out there. I understand that you guys had some kind of a meeting sometime ago. This was discussed, the flooding in 9th Street. Well, this thing is for real. If, if they put this thing in there, there's going to be traffic, a lot of traffic, more traffic than we have right now. And every time a truck or a car goes there and it's flooding, all the water goes into the house. Can you imagine with that many more cars going through there after this thing is built? Unless this thing is, is fixed, you shouldn't put more traffic in there. I'm telling you, it's, it's a river going into our house. Every time it rains like that, and a truck or a car is passing by, and the waves are just coming in, and you can't stop them. So please, please, think about it, because if it was you living there, you would not like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this? Yes, ma'am?
I wanted other people that are here from my neighborhood to speak first, but I thought?
If, if you could state your name and your physical address?
My name is Colleen Mitchell. I live at 822 Patneff, right on the corner of Patneff and 9th Street.
Okay.
And yes, there needs to be definitely something done with the lift station. Because I just ran through my glass sliding door that was on my garage, and I had to have repairmen come out and fix it. The whole time they were there, what's that smelling? What's that stinking? And I said, it's a lift station across the street. Whenever the wind blows a certain way, it's worse. And sure enough, it was blowing from the south that day. So they got a good smell of it. But one reason I wanted to show, just quickly, if I can just walk by you?
The police officer.
If he can just show you my pictures?
Yes.
They are of our flooding. To which, anytime it rains, the least bit, 9th Street floods all the way down to Austin Elementary and, and all around that area back up. Now, Mr. Timms, when we were at the rezoning board, he says, it doesn't flood that area. I have two houses over in that area. Well, his are on Washington Street. Washington Street, I am sorry, I was born 1946, 1952, I moved on Washington Street. And at that time, the street wasn't even paved. They came in and put like a three-to-four-foot round pipe all the way down Washington Street for drainage, and Washington Street has great drainage. Patneff didn't get that. And evidently, 9th Street didn't either, because they both flood. Also, one other thing I wanted to mention, I don't know if the commission knows, but since I've been there forever, that whole yellow strip, my house is where those little white dots are. I have some trailers in my backyard and behind there. And there is a canal, an underground canal, that runs the whole length of that, from 11th Street clear down to Liberty Gardens, because that used to be the city lake that came clear out around there, where Liberty Gardens is. Liberty Gardens was under the water, and they decided to make the lake smaller.
Ma'am, your time is up.
One more thing, real quick. If you could bring the map back up where you showed the M and the R? Why does it say M2 to the left, to the west? Because that's Liberty Gardens and the library. Are they going to put multifamilies there?
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for speaking. I appreciate it. Okay, so we'll go to consideration. Oh, any, oh, yes, ma'am? Please state your name and your physical address.
Paula Martin. I live at 1001 Patneff. I'm one of the people that did not get a notice about the rezoning hearing, because I'm right on that, right on that edge. I want to read you something, and then you can have these to keep. Our house flooded three times while we've lived on Patneff Avenue. The first was in April of 1991. The entire house flooded at that time. The second was in 2008 with Hurricane Dolly. The third was in June of this year. The street itself has become impassable more times than I can remember. It is, it is a constant source of worry. And to add even more households, more toilets, more bathtubs, more sinks, to an overly burdened drainage system would be unconscionable. So, in my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Seeing and hearing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. We'll go to Item Number B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading to rezone residential, single-family R1 District to residential, multifamily 2M2 District for Lot 3, Sun Valley Shopping Center, Unit Number 2 for the above-described property. Ms. Allison?
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential, single-family R1 District to residential, multifamily M2 District for Lot 2, Sun Valley Shopping Center Subdivision, Unit Number 2, save and accept 30 feet by 58.33 feet, located on the west side of 11th Street, north of Washington Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to table this item until we get some answers in a presentation from the Water Works Department.
Is there a second to this?
I'll second that.
Okay.
No, I oppose it. I think we can.
Well, well, that's why we're going to have a vote. Okay. So.
I oppose.
Wait, wait, wait. We haven't had a vote yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So is there a, we have a motion and a second to table this pending information from Sewer and Water Department. All those in favor of tabling signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And that sounds like two.
Two aye.
And those opposed to tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's two there, so it's a tie. I'm going to vote for the affirmative in tabling this until we can hear from Water and Sewer. Thank you all. Back to planning and zoning. It's your night.
This one is not controversial. The next one?
You said about the last one.
As far as I know, there's no?
Wait, 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 wait.
I joined the new job.
This is Item Number 12.
There's a question.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
This is, this is your notice. That is going to be in the next agenda item.
Oh, the 10th. When is that moving out?
November the 6th.
November 6th.
At 5:30.
Okay, Item Number 12. Public hearing to consider an ordinance on the first reading to rezone from residential, single-family R1 District to general retail GR District for Lot 9 in the west, 23.78 feet of Lot 10, Block 6, Crown Heights Edition, located at 918 East Grimes Avenue, applicant Aaron Medina.
Yes, this property is on, on Grimes Avenue and close to 9th Street. The owner recently purchased the property and is to allow an expansion of his business, which is a home healthcare center business. So he purchased it already, and he would like to expand his business to the east. The, the area is in, is in transition between single-family residential and, and general retail. So as you can see, the zoning to the?
Okay. Okay, uh, well, this is gonna be the pause that refreshes. Ms. Amanda-
Allison, do we- Commissioner Puentes stepped out. Did we- we didn't lose a quorum, did we?
We missed the mayor.
We have three commissioners.
The mayor pro tem and we have three commissioners.
Three commissioners, we're fine.
Okay, the pause is over. You're on.
Charter?
Huh?
I believe the charter calls for three commissioners, the mayor and or the mayor pro tem.
And or the mayor pro tem? Okay.
Yeah, we have three commissioners and the mayor pro tem.
We have three commissioners.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's why I kept going. We do have three.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, okay. Roll it.
Okay, we're back.
And Amanda's keeping us honest.
Like I said, you have a single-family zoning to the east and to the north, and then general retail district zoning to the west and to the south. So, this uh, this is a subject property here. It's kind of a property in transition between residential and commercial. And that's the survey of the property is eighty feet by a hundred and forty feet. There used to be a house there. Uh, it's vacant now. The aerial photo shows a house there, but the house is no longer there. And then you have La Familia Home Healthcare that purchased the property, and they would like to expand the business.
Is that the car wash? Love you.
And that's a picture of the property. The land use plan calls for a low-temperature residential, uh, but you have uh, right next to it, you have a mixed use in the plan. And although the rezoning is not consistent with the land use plan, uh, it is a property considered in transition and consistent with the development patterns to the west. If the rezoning is approved, a solid screening fence of le- of not less than six feet in height will be required along the south and east property lines whenever the property is developed. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. This went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's no opposition of this one, and they recommended approval unanimously.
Okay, are there any questions from the commission?
So, just to make sure I understand right, it's some- they're expanding their business before they need it.
And to clarify, the- the fence then would be to separate the business from the residence? You say east and south and-
Yes, whenever they develop.
So, you go along the alleyway and along the far?
There's no- yeah, there's no alley.
Is this by the colonial? The old- behind the colonial?
Behind the colonial.
Behind the colonial, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I know. Uh, thank you. Public hearing. We'll open it up. Anybody like to speak
for or against the zoning change? Seeing nobody, hearing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, we're gonna do a consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading to rezone from residential, single-family R-one district to general retail GR district for the above-described property. Ms. Allison?
An ordinance mending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential, single-family R-one district to general retail GR district for lot nine in the west, twenty-three point seven-eight feet of lot ten, lot six, Crown Heights Edition, located at nine-one-eight East Grimes Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Uh, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
We have an emotion, and we have a second here, and um, all in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, still planning and zoning, but the last item.
No public hearing on this one.
Yes.
Uh, this is an ordinance to uh-
May I say this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. A consideration of possible action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading to regulate and reduce pollution that enters the surface water of the state of Texas and waters of the United States from discharges into the city's municipal separate storm sewer system by providing for the detection and elimination of illicit connections to the storm sewer system and require erosion control and pollution prevention at construction sites and to establish penalties and if- and an effective date.
Yes, I present to the Clean Water Act and the Texas Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit, the City of Harlingen is required to develop, implement, and enforce a stormwater management program designed to reduce the discharge of pollutants into the city's streets, gutters, ditches, and storm drains and to the surface waters of the state and the surface waters of the United States to the maximum extent practicable. The attached ordinance incorporates requires six minimum control measures, which are listed in your packet, for the city's stormwater management program and the intent of reducing pollution and contamination entering the city's separate stormwater sewer system, which is the MS four to the greatest extent practicable. This is uh, to allow us to continue to be in compliance with our MS four permit with DCEQ.
Okay, are there any questions from the commissioners? Uh, Ms. Allison, this says ordinance. Are you to read?
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen to regulate and reduce pollution that enters the surface water in the state of Texas and waters of the United States from discharges into the city's municipal separate storm sewer system by providing for the detection and elimination of illicit condition- connections to the storm sewer system and requiring erosion control and pollution prevention at construction sites and to establish penalty- excuse me, penalties and an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Item number fourteen. You may finally have a seat, sir.
Would you like some water?
Item number fourteen, consideration and possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen to accept and expend grant funding to the amount of three thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-five cents made available through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, BJA, under the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Bulletproof Vest Partnership. Chief?
Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, this is an annual grant we get for bulletproof vest replacement. It's a fifty-fifty grant, so uh, the government pays for half of them, and we replace the ones we need each year.
Okay, questions of the chief? Need a motion to approve to accept this three thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-five cents?
Someone.
One, a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Number fifteen. You're up for the next thirteen, I see. Uh, consideration and possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen to accept and expend grant funding in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and zero cents made available through the Office of the Governor of Homeland Security Grant Program, HSPG, under the SHSP LETPA Solicitation Fiscal Year nineteen. Sir?
Again, this is an annual grant. We usually use it for technology, and on this one, we're gonna be purchasing some portable radios at six.
Okay, any questions of the chief?
Is- is- do we have an involvement in it, or is it one hundred percent?
This one's one hundred percent.
One hundred percent, great.
Okay, need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Need a second. Uh, all in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Item number sixteen, consideration and possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen to accept grant funding in the amount of eighty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents made available through the Office of the Governor, VA, Victims of Crime Act Formula Grant Program, VA nineteen, PY twenty, General Direct Services for the Harlingen Police Department Crime Victim Liaison Program. Sir?
Again, this one's a two-year grant for a crime victims liaison. Uh, Ms. Bea Garcia, she does a great job for the city in helping out those victims of crime. Uh, it pays for her salary. This one is an eighty percent, twenty percent cash match, so we match the twenty percent, and pays her salary benefits, and uh, we help out with our twenty percent.
Are there any questions from the commission? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Item number seventeen. They thought I was kidding. Uh, consideration and possible action to approve a request from Robert Villanueva-Garcia, Deacon Evangelist of Iglesia La Luz Del Mundo, The Light of the World, to close Jackson Street and Van Buren Street Friday, November first, Saturday, November second, and Sunday, November third, two thousand and nineteen, starting at ten AM to three PM for their church festival. Sir?
I apologize, there's a slight typo on this. It's actually, they're requesting to close Fourth Street between Jackson and Van Buren, and it's for their fall festival.
Okay, uh, let me reread this then.
Okay.
Uh, consideration and possible action to approve a request from Robert Villanueva-Garcia, Deacon Evangelist of Iglesia La Luz Del Mundo, The Light of the World, to close Fourth Street between Jackson Street and Van Buren Street, uh, Friday, November first, Saturday, November second, and Sunday, November third, two now, two thousand and nineteen, starting from ten AM to three PM for their church festival.
That's correct. Okay, uh, we had some concerns with this one. That's why we brought it as a regular commission item, and it would actually start at ten AM on Friday and go through till three PM on Sunday. This is also the same weekend as uh, market days, so we already have Jackson Street closed at Fourth, and then uh, closing off Fourth Street on that side would create a traffic issue. Yes, anybody coming down Jackson Street could go north on Fourth Street, but then we'd also have to close off the southbound on Fourth Street. Uh, it was just a little outside of what we felt comfortable approving, so we asked them to come to the commission. I don't know if there's anybody here from the church.
Is there anybody here from uh, Iglesia La Luz Del Mundo, The Light of the World? Okay, uh, sir, yes. Come up and state your name and your physical address, please.
Hello, my name is Jaime Torres, three fourteen Iowa, here in Harlingen. Um, we've done this uh, past few years. Uh, we've- they've closed the Fourth Street between Jackson and Van Buren, so we need it for Saturday, for Friday and Saturday only, not Sunday, but it'll be through nine o'clock uh, Saturday night, so that's what we're asking for. We've done it before. We haven't had any issues with anybody yet, so uh, all the pedestrians are either walking through Jackson Street, uh, the people going into the market. Also, they take uh, our parking spaces at the church, and we let the public be served by that parking space, so if you guys approve, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, sir.
Questions from the commission?
I have a question. Okay, so it says here from ten to three, and you're asking on nine?
No, actually, it'll start uh, on Friday. Um, it starts on Friday at ten per se, and then it'll end. They'll initially state it till Sunday. We don't need it till Sunday. Nine o'clock Saturday will be fine for us.
No, but- but so, but Friday, you need it from ten to what time?
Ten to nine.
Nine PM?
Yes.
So, the whole day, and then Saturday?
Saturday as well, ten to nine.
And- and- and chief, you're suggesting just till three? Or why is it written ten to three?
The original-
No, it's just Sunday, or?
Yeah, the original request we had went on Sunday up until three PM Sunday.
So, I think the original request was Friday at ten through Sunday at three.
They don't need it till Sunday.
And so, that's why it was written that way.
But- but what did you actually ask it for? Is it ten to nine, Friday and Saturday?
For Friday, yes, sir.
Or you could leave it so close to Sunday.
I've attended these in there. It's a good thing.
I've got a question. I think the concern from PD and- and the concern for my- for me was that we're also having market days that same day, and it gets very busy downtown, and we have- and to have street closed for three- a period of three days, uh, there was a concern with traffic flow and pedestrian traffic.
And in light of his change, do we have a problem with two days?
No.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm asking the- I'm asking the city manager and the PD. They recommended no.
It's from- it's from ten to nine. Chief, do you see any disruption on Friday and Saturday? I know Saturday's when we have market days.
Again, it'll be a- probably a little bit of confusion and bottleneck on Saturday during market days, and there's only one way out, really. You've got two lanes on Jackson Street coming to Fourth that usually-
So, you're not recommending approval, right?
Yeah, we didn't recommend approval, but that's why we brought it up.
I- I do have one more question then, at- when I asked that. I noticed that we put the mobile unit. Is the mobile unit on Third or on Fourth?
It's on Fourth Street. It's on Jackson.
And so, when we put the mobile unit there, is it- is Fourth Street blocked, or do we allow traffic to go back and forth on-
Fourth Street's not blocked.
It is not blocked, okay. Because I know that it's a long way to go, because I've gotten trapped going, and all of a sudden, ah, it's market days. You gotta go either one way or the other to get back around and get back to where I'm going, and that's the reason I asked. So, traditionally, Fourth is the open lane to get around market, Jackson Street market.
Right.
So, another thing that I know this- this church also participates in our market days, and uh, they're just asking for one weekend. It's a fall festival, so I don't- for me, I don't see a problem.
So, chief, is there any compromise that you and the police department and with Mr. Serny here would be more comfortable with?
We've already been talking with the church on compromises, and they've- they've altered their recommendations or requests already. Uh, originally, it went from Jackson Street, where they wanted to close Jackson Street, and we didn't want that, and they moved it to Fourth Street, so. Yeah, we've had some talks about it. It's just personally, uh, for the police department, I still see it as a- as an issue, although there's still an- an egress out of there through uh, Fourth Street.
Right, so the issue I have is, they're in charge of the public safety, and when you go against that, I know you wanna be accounting everybody, but you- you know, that this-
That's why I'm- that's why I'm looking at the chief right now.
So, I might leave it to the chief.
Chief, you're still not comfortable closing it for two days on Fourth Street?
God forbid you have an accident or something.
So, uh, there's some- there's some parking lots across the street. Would they be accommodated to use those parking lots?
Those parking lots belong to other businesses, although they do fill up during market days. I don't know if they'd be able to use them or not.
Have you talked to the businesses to see if they allow you to use the parking lots?
Uh, the parking lot for the uh-
Across the street from the church, on Fourth Street?
Yeah, across the street from the attorney there, so like I- like he said, they're usually occupied with parking on there, so.
But have you asked them to allow you to have the church event on their parking lot?
The parking lot would probably not be suitable. We have to run power to the stage that we're putting out there, so that's what we want to do on the church side, which is Fourth Street. It's not a very big stretch, and like Captain is saying here, um, there is an egress out of the other side. We've done it other times, even on Jackson Street itself. There's a lot of pedestrians there, so traffic does flow regardless to the north of Fourth Street, to the south towards Van Buren. It will be blocked off, like we said, from Jackson to Van Buren, but you know, now we have the egress going north the other way. Uh, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, but there's still a way out of there, and we've like, we've done it several last years. We've done it, and we haven't had any issues yet, so.
Sir, but you know that there- people coming by may not- that's- I think that's- that's a concern for me as well.
Would you have um, any issue with moving your event to the following weekend when we don't have market days?
Well, we- we're actually taking advantage that there is market day. Like you said, we are part of the downtown district as well. We'd like to take advantage of that. Uh, our property is being, you know, right now, we are actually in the- in the works of paying that property off, and this would help us a great deal. Like I said, we- we help the committee out a lot there during the downtown. We try to keep it safe. People that- that pertain to our church, we take care of the people that are around that area, so we would like for you guys to approve that for us, please. You know, it's not only about once a year that we do this, so actually, we haven't done it in a couple of years, so if you guys-
And chief, you said you've already- you've already had- you guys have already kinda compromised and are okay with it?
No, he's not comfortable with it. That's what he's doing here.
No, he's- don't answer for the chief. I'm asking- I'm asking. You've already- you all have had some talks.
We've been discussing about the location. We've offered some alternatives, but because they wanted market days weekend, and they wanted it accessible for- for people going to market days, so.
So, you're not recommending approval?
Market days, and market days is- that- it still ends at-
The first Saturday of every month.
No, but it still ends at four, right?
At what time are market days?
Nine to three.
Yeah, nine to three.
Nine to three, and there's setup and then there's takedown, but the bulk of the people are there from nine to three.
So, chief, why don't we close that- that section on Jackson from Fourth Street to Fifth Street and leave Fourth Street open to- for traffic? I mean, would that be allowed? I mean, I don't know if that would be an option or not, because I know once market days is gone, everybody's gone. I mean, Jackson is pretty much dead.
So, so chief, would-
I think that was the original request, bringing my mom, that they wanted to close Jackson from Fifth to Fourth, but Jackson being the main thoroughfare, especially in the downtown, I felt that was- that's when we got in discussions about options.
So, considering public safety, if market days is over at three, would it be acceptable to close the street down at three? to close the street down at 3:30 or 4 o'clock, 4th Street, until 9:00 p.m. on Saturday?
Yes, my only concern is during market.
During market day. Sir, may I ask you, would you be comfortable on Saturday, November 2nd, of starting your festival, let's say at 3:30 or 4 o'clock?
We're actually need to set up earlier, that's why we're asking for Friday as well. It's going to be, we're going to have several stands up on 4th Street. So if I may, sir, the city has closed before Jackson Street for us, way before on 5th Street, and we've had our festival on Jackson Street itself, so...
Right, but the sticking point seems to be that there is market days going on and there will be congestion there with people and vehicles.
But you want it to coincide with market days, that's your whole point, right?
Correct.
Okay, I live right around the corner and it's, I understand your concern, Chief, but I've made my way around the area, I don't know how many, we haven't had any accidents, God forbid we have one now, but this is a church community event, it's in my district, I've attended these things before, it's a good thing, so I'm just, you know...
May I finally ask my question, because I asked and you didn't answer. Are you or are you not comfortable with closing 4th? That's all I want to hear.
Well, if we had recommended approval, we wouldn't be here.
I know that. I just want to make sure that we hear it, with all the going back and forth, Friday at 3 o'clock to Saturday at 9 o'clock, you're still not comfortable with closing 4th Street?
But Friday, I have no concern, because Jackson Street's open, it's really this Saturday during market day, and if you choose to approve it, we'll figure out a way to try to make it flow as best we can.
So again, I'm not comfortable going against his recommendation.
Okay, I'm going to read what I believe is the corrected time and place to bring up for a vote. Consideration and possible action to approve a request from Robert Villanueva Garcia, Deacon Evangelist of Iglesia La Luz del Mundo, the Light of the World, to close 4th Street between Jackson Street and Van Buren on Friday, November 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. That is what you want, is that correct, sir?
Wait, 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 wait.
That's not what's on here.
That's not what I understood, it's from 3:00 p.m. on Friday, 3:00 p.m. on Friday and remain closed until 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, is that not correct?
10.
I have 10:00 a.m. on Friday.
10:00 a.m., but all night it's going to be closed, is that, because you're going to leave stuff out there.
The original request was for three days, right?
Correct.
Starting Friday at 10:00 a.m. all the way through Sunday. Now he's amended that to Friday at 10:00 a.m. through Saturday at 9:00 p.m.
Correct.
So it will remain, it will remain closed for two days.
Closed throughout the night, not the way it was...
Okay, let me rephrase this, if I think I understand this correctly.
Say that one more time. I just like the way you said it.
Consideration and possible action to approve a request from Robert Villanueva Garcia, Deacon Evangelist of Iglesia La Luz del Mundo, the Light of the World, to close 4th Street between Jackson Street and Van Buren Street Friday from 10:00 a.m. through Saturday at 9:00 p.m., November 2nd. Is the motion clear?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I need a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, I need a second.
Excuse me.
Yes, yeah, you're Mr. Downtown.
You might want to hear from him.
I'm here, Edward Messa, 209 West Jackson. I'm representing, unfortunately, the committee, the Jackson Street market days couldn't be here, but their concern was that they, it'll be detrimental for 4th Street to be closed that Saturday, because people usually come from the south when it's just open all the streets and the third is where, you know, they have to sign come to our historic district. So during market day, they all come through 4th Street, and that's just a natural entrance to them. They appreciate, we appreciate our neighbors, and they're off of the district, the church, they're not in the district, so, but we appreciate them participating with, you know, they participate with a lot of our events, but I'm talking on behalf of the committee. They feel that they're against having 4th Street closed on the day of market day. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Edward.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first, we have a first to the motion, Mr. Pointe, and a second...
To approve.
To approve, and the second, Mr. De La Rosa. So we'll take a vote. All in favor of this modified request signify by voting aye.
Aye.
That's two ayes, all opposed.
Aye.
That's two, I'm going to have to break the tie again, and I'm going to have to vote for the police department in concern for the public safety and I vote negative. Motion fails. Consideration and possible action to approve, thank you for being here, number 18, consideration and possible action to approve the fire protection service contract between the City of Harlingen and the City of Combs, Texas to provide fire protection services for the cost of $95,726.34 payable in quarterly installments of $23,931.59 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Sir.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, Mr. Sedna. The rate of fire protection services for the City of Combs is .10 cents per 100 valuation based on the city's 2019 certified net taxable value. After reviewed by their city council, the City of Combs has signed the fire protection contract agreement with stated provisions. Approved this contract ensures fire protection services continue to this community for the agreed compensation as stated, $95,726.34 for FY 1920 payable in quarterly installments again, $23,931.59 on the following dates, December 31st, 2019, March 31st, 2020, June 30th, 2020, and September 30th, 2020. The previous year, FY 1819, the amount was $95,430.26, so this is an increase of $296,008.
Any questions of the chief?
Motion for approval.
Motion and the second, all in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
And like, opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Number 19, Andy, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading to permanently close L and L and 1/2 Street between Fair Park Boulevard and Adams Avenue for the construction of the Destination Park Project.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Protem. This is in support of Destination Park. Staff is requesting the permanent closure of a section of L and L and 1/2 Street between Fair Park Boulevard and Adams Avenue for the construction of Destination Park Project. The park project is proposing to remove the existing roadway and replace it with a walkway, landscaping, small pavilions, and a water feature. The demolition of the roadway will take place prior to the construction of the park project, and this is a layout of the, I believe we have, we may have a slide of the proposed street closure, if not, it should be in your packet.
Okay, any questions? And this is a part of the overall design for the park?
Correct. I'm sorry, I do have a correction to make on the ordinance itself. The heading does not include L and 1/2 Street, it just says L Street, but it is L and L and 1/2 there.
Okay, that's what I have here.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. This is an ordinance, so, and this is Ms. Allison again.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Harlingen, Texas authorizing the closure of L and L and 1/2 Street between Fair Park Boulevard and Adams Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Okay, now I'll take a motion.
Second.
All in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Item number 20, consideration and possible action to renew the facility usage agreement with the Royal Youth Soccer Club for the use of soccer fields 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10 at the Harlingen Soccer Complex and the concession stand and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Mr. Alvia.
Yes, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, we have brought this before you all for a renewal for the Royal Youth Soccer League, and what we've done is they're going to be using fields 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10 on their regular, on a regular basis, and they will also have access to fields number 7 on Mondays and Saturdays, and fields 3 and 4 Monday through Saturday. And they're sharing some of these fields with the other leagues.
Questions from the commission?
Did you get everything all worked out with the two leagues, they've finally...
Yes.
I know that not everybody got what they wanted, but everybody's okay with their...
Yes, sir, and so I know the commissioner had asked about the configuration of the fields at the last meeting, and so this is the configuration, but we did work it out, we've talked to all three leagues, and so we've kind of agreed on this configuration.
So the league in question was on field 7, they're going to use it Tuesday through Friday and allow them to use the fields on Monday through Saturday?
Yes.
And 1 and 2 still lie fallow to regenerate the grass and the soil?
Correct, and we would use those for league games or for tournaments.
Motion for approval.
Need a second, there's a first, second, first and second, all in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item number 21, thank you, Alvia, board appointments, any board appointments, Mr. Frank?
I have a couple. I'd like to reappoint to the Construction Board of Adjustments, Bill Holloman, and Convention and Visitors Bureau, Eriberto Aguilar, and Harlingen Community Improvement Board, reappoint Paul Durant, Museum Advisory Board, reappoint Joe Garza Jr., and Senior Citizens Advisory Board, reappoint Julianne Isel Perez.
Which industry are you representing on the CVV? Because we each have an industry.
Tour, uh, I'm not sure, good question. I thought it was the...
Because I don't recognize the name, so I'm just curious what...
Tourism.
Hotel manager?
Oh, he's, yeah.
Okay, great, that's what I wanted to know.
He's over at Hampton Inn.
Great, that's awesome.
River? Victor?
None.
Okay, need a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve the...
The name?
...slate?
Second, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. There is no other business that comes before the city, and so thank you all for being here. Have a most pleasant evening.